All right, let's begin. I would like to welcome everyone to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting this Monday, March 7th of 2022 to our esteemed audience members and people abroad. I'd like to start with a roll call, please.
Becker?
Here.
O'Flaherty?
Here.
McMahon?
Here.
Penny Graham?
Here.
Stoker?
Here.
Wright?
Here.
Chair Maxwell?
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you. I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda if there are any additions to the, if there are not any additions or deletions.
Motion to approve the agenda as is.
Motion passed by, or singled out by McMahon. Seconded, please.
Seconded.
Seconded by Wright. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We'll look to the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. If there are any additions or deletions, please let me know. If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I move to approve as written.
Moved by O'Flaherty.
Second.
You can take it.
Seconded by Stoker. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This is the public participation of the program. If we have anybody that would like to speak to anything that is not on the agenda, please step forward now. State your name, address. Anyone? Beeler? Nope. Okay. We'll move on to new business. We have a public hearing, a petition by the City of DeKalb for text amendments to the UDO to remove the 250-foot setback for cannabis dispensary to a residential use and to add to the CBD Central Business District, PDC, Plan Development Commercial District, and PD1 Plan Development, I'm sorry, PDI, Plan Development Industrial District to the list of zoning districts where a special use for dispensary can be applied for. And I ask for a staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair. You have in your packets a staff report regarding the proposed text amendments. The UDO defines cannabis business establishment as it's adult use or medical cannabis dispensing organization. So we're just dealing with dispensaries at this time. Adult use or medical. So what we're proposing, a couple amendments. One is to remove the 250-foot setback for dispensary to a residential use. Also looking to add to the list of zoning districts where dispensary can apply for special use, adding the CBD Central Business District, and also adding the PDC and PDI districts to that list. Looking specifically at the amendments, so what will this will do, will expand the areas where a possible dispensary can locate while still protecting the public health and safety and welfare. The, so adding the CBD to the list, looking at this, these dispensaries are pretty well regulated by the state and also the city, and they act almost like a pharmacy. So having these in the downtown districts would certainly be appropriate in certain situations. So we're proposing to add that as use in the CBD district as a special use, and also adding the PDC and PDI. Now, for those, each zoning sites that are zone, plan development, they have an ordinance specifically for that site, as you know. So we'd have to look in those ordinances and see if there's any restrictions on that type of use, or if it just, many of the current ones we have, this referred like to the general commercial district standards. So there'd be a special use in there also. Second amendment deals with the setback. Back in 2015, when the city created the initial standards for dispensaries for cannabis, they had a thousand-foot setback to residential and also to schools and daycare centers. In 2019, we did a pretty comprehensive amendment to the regulations to lessen them up a little bit, reduce that setback down to 250 feet. As I mentioned before, they're pretty highly regulated by the state. They're pretty clean operations. We have existing regulations in the UDO regarding how the parking lot is lit, other safety provisions, signage and advertising limits. There's hour restrictions. There's a security plan that has to be approved by the police department. So we have some pretty good standards already in effect that will keep these safe. And then some areas that can be, work in those commercial areas where they're proximity to residential. So the current 250-foot setback for dispensaries to daycare centers, schools, and NIU academic and residence halls, that's going to remain in place. That's not affected with this proposed amendment. So we have some areas, and I have a map up here that's a little different than ones in your pack, and we handed out, showing the current regulations. And the green shows generally where they could be potentially go. This is the current regulations within the 250-foot setback to residential. And then we simply just remove the residential setback, and you can see how the increase between the two. This is the current regulations and proposed. As you can see, it kind of opens up the downtown area, West Lincoln Highway, Sycamore Road a little bit more, even East Lincoln and South Forest Street do open up more potential areas for that. Again, these are going to be special uses in any situation. So you're going to have a hearing in front of the commission, a neighborhood notification, and then with special uses, you can, you know, approve, deny, or approve with conditions if it's warranted. And, you know, we do have, just noting too, in these West Lincoln Highway and some other areas, you know, we do have some of these residential areas, a lot of apartments on West Lincoln Highway that are, actually some of them are even zoned commercial, but they're in close proximity to some of the commercial areas. So we felt this, open it up a little bit more, and we'll feel confident that we still have the regulations in place to make these safe. And again, special use in every situation, case by case, goes through the commission recommendation onto city council. So we recommend approval. I have a sample motion prepared in the staff report, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'll open it up to the public with any questions. If you have any, please step forward to the podium and state your name and address. If not, I will close the public hearing and open it up to questions from the commission.
It's pretty street.
And somewhere in the distance, a dog barked.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
What, currently, what are the, what the cannabis dispensaries do we have in the city limits? What are revenues that we're, are they doing well?
Well, we don't have any in the city currently. We did prove on a zoning standpoint, a few. We had a few on, or one on Peace Road a few years back, but they
Junction.
Didn't get approval by the state, and they went away. There's a current one on West Lincoln Highway in the Junction Shopping Center. I remember those, that one. Did get approval. They got an extension to till July 1st. They're still waiting for state approval. So we don't have any in the city at this time, but we do have a lot of, you know, interests. So I think we want to try and open up the areas where potentially they could locate. But at this time, I think, I believe there's a lawsuit at the state level going on. So hopefully soon, we'll be able to have one in the city, where we currently don't.
Bill Nicholas, City Manager. Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Just to add to what Dan was saying, so the state statute that allowed for the legalization of cannabis as we know it now, also laid out certain regions in the state and defined how many licenses could be issued by the state in those areas. And we're in an eight-county area, and there are only three licenses allowed in that area. And as Dan said, there have been two that have been by the city government authorized in terms of zoning and otherwise. But then you have to go to the state level, and they have not been given permission to proceed with a license. And also, there are 185 state licensees, those who've already been awarded the state license, who were involved in a suit, I can't remember what district court it is. And until that's resolved, which could be months yet, there won't be any that haven't already been issued. So we're hoping to get one or two. I don't know that we'll get three, but that's about where we are in answer to your question.
Bill, you said that's in an eight-county area. There are eight?
Yeah.
Wow. So we definitely want to make ourselves as inviting as possible.
It's, it's a slice, a pie slice, DeKalb County, and I'm not going to remember all of them, but it's
It goes west and northwest.
Very, very lowly populated. So I think we're likely to get a couple eventually. But, so Ogil and Northwest are there. So we don't have Winnebago or Boone. And anyway, it's very small.
Are we notified when licenses are applied for in, within that sector of ours?
We're not notified. We could probably find out if they've applied to the state.
Sure.
So I have a question. How come on the current map, some of them disappear on the proposed? It's like there's a section on 23 where it's all green on the east side, and that's not on the proposed. And there's some, it looks like over by, like, you know, the target area that is green on the current, and then it's white on the proposed, and also on Lincoln Highway, there's an area.
Yeah, that's the, what it's showing. The current regulations with the 250-foot setback to residential takes out a lot of area that where dispensary couldn't locate. So with the proposed amendments, which takes out that setback, the areas that it could potentially locate does increase.
But I'm saying it disappears. There's some that disappears, the opposite.
Yeah, there are a few that are, that didn't transfer, I guess.
Okay. Yeah, there's a, this was a general map to kind of show the amount, general amount of area that would increase. We didn't look at each individual parcel and see which was changed on that. It's just a kind of a general indication of where they're allowed now and with the proposed amendments, where they could go.
So it looks like the biggest increases along the Lincoln Highway.
West Lincoln Highway downtown.
Yeah.
A little bit in Sycamore Road, and even like East Lincoln or South Forest Street were the biggest areas where it could.
So then should we assume that if it's green on the current, it should be green on the proposed as well?
It generally should be, yes. But I can't speak for every situation, but.
I was just trying to think about with these proposed changes, is there a situation where it could currently be allowed, and then with the proposal, it's no longer allowed?
There shouldn't be.
Okay.
Because we're lessening the setbacks.
That's what I thought, but that's what I'm not seeing on the maps, that's why.
Yeah. There shouldn't be areas taken away.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is the proposal that you are talking about here, is it common in other cities too? Are they doing the same thing?
Yeah, many other cities do have setbacks, varying 200, 500,000, you know, some don't. It does vary quite a bit. But I think we found that these have been built, as you can see in other cities, they're in shopping center, strip centers, they're nice-looking buildings. There's really very little impact really on the surrounding area. They're kind of treated like any other commercial retail. So, but it depends. A few do have some setbacks. Some of ours, like the schools and daycare centers, that's somewhat common too. But residential, what I found was kind of the varying levels of setbacks, if they had any.
Do we want this in our downtown? I mean, obviously, you're proposing, if, I mean, as a committee here, is this something that we want in our downtown? That's what troubles me.
Yeah, well, like I said, each is special use. So if something comes in and location, then you feel that, boy, this is not a good location for it, and that this particular part of downtown, then you have that ability to, you know, recommend not to approve it at that particular location. If you find that the findings of fact with a special use that doesn't fit in in that particular location, for whatever reason, you have that ability through special use to not allow it.
By downtown, do you mean the Lincoln Highway corridor here? Because obviously, I mean, like, when we voted on it for the junction, that was one of the things that depressed me is the state regulations that are required for this. I mean, it's a fortress, and it couldn't be more secure and probably subdued. But are you, are you concerned about the?
From First to Fourth Street?
Yeah, yeah.
For our downtown DeKalb.
Sure, yeah.
I've been there for 20, 30 years.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm just guessing, but by the volume, well, yeah, but I'm just thinking in terms of the volume and the traffic going in and out, you know, restaurants, I think, you know, as you know, probably have a hard time finding parking sometimes. So I think it would be, end up more in a junction-type situation where there's off the, off the road.
I think most of our locations, square footage is a little bit bigger than most of the tenant spaces in the downtown, but certainly we want to keep that open for, if there's a spot that works, so.
Yeah, and these are very in-and-out businesses. People do not hang out there. Go and get your stuff, get out.
I think I'm in the minority. I don't, I don't think I want this in our, in our downtown, or I don't want to make it any, you know, I know, I realize I'm going to be in the minority, but I just am not in favor of loosening it up and doing.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I mean, but like I said, your concern is in the, like the First through First Street area just because of the nature of the business?
The people that have the junction, they're still renting the junction space, right?
They are.
And so they're hoping for a license?
Yes.
So are we doing this so that more people will rent spaces and?
Well, if they don't get one, or if there's another ability to get another license in the city, we want to keep that open, you know, in different locations. So they haven't got the state license yet, so they may not get it.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thanks, Bill. You know, again, having gone through this process once before, like I said, and going through all the state regulations that we hadn't examined the first time that we went through that round of approval, I was floored at the level of security and the level of governance over it to even operate in the first place. So, you know, opinions will vary, for sure, but I, I don't foresee this, I mean, I don't feel personally this is any different than having a liquor store on Lincoln Highway.
Well, but that leads to a question too. When we originally considered the one that was going to be on Peace Road, there had to be separate entrance, secured entrance in the rear for the product to be moved into the facility, secured at the front. That doesn't change, does it? Is that still true?
No, there, no other regulations change from that time.
So even if they were to try to put in a location on West Lincoln Highway, they would still have to have the, they would have to be a location where they can still come in through the, you know, through a separate entrance in the back. And it seems to me that there are a lot of locations there that will really show that.
Yeah, I mean, to Bill's point, like, for instance, Dunkin' Donuts was probably one of the only places that figured out how to make a drive-through out of an alley. And so, but I, there's not a lot of other opportunities downtown for that. But yeah, you're absolutely right. And so when you look at this map, to point that out again, you're absolutely right. When you look at this map, not every portion of this in green is eligible because they would have to go through the special use permit, and they would have to meet all those requirements. So this is just potential, and, you know, some of them would have to be developed even further, but.
And the CBD is not just along Lincoln Highway. It goes a block or two north and south a little bit.
Yeah.
Which are some larger lots there and larger buildings.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve. Anyone?
I'll make the motion. Based on the submitted petition and testimony presented, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to the city council approval of the text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance regarding cannabis business establishments, as indicated in Exhibit A of this staff report.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Stoker, moved by O'Flaherty. Can I get a roll call, please?
Becker?
Yes.
O'Flaherty?
Yes.
McMahon?
No.
Penny Graham?
Yes.
Stoker?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Chair Maxwell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, we have a discussion or a presentation by Mr. Nicholas on the changes in the discussions of the plan, the, I'm sorry, the comprehensive plan.
It's regarding the compensation, actually, for the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd much rather talk about the comprehensive plan.
You know, I laughed when Jerry didn't grab his glasses, and I grabbed the wrong ones today, so I need to be looking a little bit closer.
Well, good evening. I am, I am here to talk about something completely different. So it was brought to my attention about six weeks ago that members of two of the city's 14 boards and commissions were receiving some level of compensation. And my first reaction was shock and a little bit of embarrassment. When I arrived here in January 19, maybe I was still thinking about the government the way it was when I left it 20 years before, when I was, department head and then city manager back in the late 80s and through much of the 90s, when there was no compensation for the volunteer commissions and boards that had been set up at that time. And there were a few more that were set up after my departure in 20 years or so before I came back. But there was no mention of it in the city code, which I did my homework before I did my, my interview. And also, there wasn't really any mention of it in the city budget. And it doesn't amount to a large number. In the course of approving expenses for the city, I'm the fourth level, and the fifth level is the council, but at the staff level, I'm sort of the top of that pyramid. And the three levels that review everything, every check, generally bring hundreds to me a week, sometimes in a day, depending on the time of the month. And I never once noticed that there was a $25 check being written once, or maybe it was a $50, because you, according to practice, not necessarily the city code, receive $25 per meeting you attend, not per meeting that might be called. Additionally, the, the only other board or commission that does receive some compensation is the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. Now, they meet once a month normally, or they're required to. But when we're hiring, and we go through hiring processes for the fire department and the police department, or when a list of potential hirees is expired, they may meet two days straight, eight hours a day, doing interviews, setting up lists, and all the rest of that, for which they were getting $10 an hour. So this posed a dilemma, was brought to our attention and the council's attention at a council meeting. And I've wrestled with this and talked to others, and I, I feel probably the best thing is to go to the council and ask them to pull this out of the city code, and I'll tell you why. And I welcome your thoughts. One, if we're going to have compensation for people who serve on volunteer boards and commissions, which meet in their regular fashion or not at the same pace and the same number of times a month, it would be a little difficult to come up with that system so that everybody is treated equally. So some don't get 25 a month and 200 a month, or whatever it is. And then there's a general question about whether this is why you joined up, whenever you did join up. And some of you have been serving for a long time, some not quite as long. I doubt that the compensation ever entered into your mind. At least, I haven't met one commissioner or board member who would say, that's why I, that's why I joined that board or commission. And I've talked to some others as well. I think, and as we look at best practices in other communities, people join volunteer boards and commissions for just that. They, they want to serve. They want to do something, give back to their community, and they want to do it generously and, and are willing to take the time. And if they feel that it's interfering with other things in their lives or families, then they politely resign and move on to something else, and then maybe come back another time. So I think that's a good system for our community. I don't see a better way around it at this point. I'd like to clean this up, and I'd like to go to the council meeting, probably on the 28th of this month, the next council meeting after the one this coming Monday, which is kind of set agenda-wise with, in a low-key fashion, just to amend the code so that it's clear that there's no compensation.
Thank you, Paul. Any comments or questions?
Makes sense to me.
Me too.
Thank you.
Well, there goes my popcorn machine.
Well.
I appreciate you coming to tell us that you weren't going to pay us in person, Bill.
It's also why I said so far away.
I see you sitting in the far corner of the room, and I will promptly tender my resignation.
I was tempted to bump up from stop and go to Starbucks, and I never did it, so it's not going to affect me in the least.
Thank you. The Fire and Police Commission felt the same way.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Staff reports?
Yeah, next meeting, March 21st. No public hearings yet. We've been working on, particularly Bill, on the comp plan, doing some initial language regarding the introduction, the background, some of the graphs and demographic information, and starting the goals. So we're bringing that to the commission in the next few meetings, probably not the next one, but perhaps in April, it looks like, for some feedback from the commission.
Can I just add to that? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Our intent here is not to give you a fait accompli, here it is, take it or leave it. Actually, the opposite of that. A comp plan has certain essential components, and one of them is basically to assess how we got to where we are. You, you know, from a planning standpoint, all the decisions, we actually replicate every one of those decisions by a title, going back to 2005. That's the last time we had a comp plan update. Dan did that heavy worklifting. The other thing is to look at our, our community in a data-centric way. So we look at demographics, how we have grown to this point. So my job, I thought, initially, working with Dan and others on the staff level, is to serve up the plates as we know them. Here's, here's a table we're used to seeing, okay? And then the hard, the really hard, and, and I think the exciting stuff, and certainly the challenging stuff, which is the creation of goals and objectives, looking forward. And we have to figure a timeline, and that's up for grabs, too. This last one was way too long. Five years is about average. We don't have crystal balls that look real sharply much beyond that. If we're doing a financial plan, which the council's going to see, three years is more typical. But five to 10 is a planning horizon. If you're in a period of rapid change in growth, as we are, at least on the industrial side, and to some extent, commercial, not so much residential, which is interesting, about 20 years ago was the reverse of that, then you ought to do it every three to five years. When I was in Sycamore, we did three in seven years. That would, but that was the period 1998 to 2011, and a lot of residential development, a lot of change. Schools were concerned about having space, and we, you can remember, been around that long to know that that was a very dynamic period. We're, it's a little different now. So we're going to serve it up to you. We want your thoughts. We're going to have workshops here. We'll publicly advertise them. Hopefully, we fill the room. We have people coming up and asking questions. You're asking questions. We come back with something that reflects what we heard, and you decide whether we did a good job or not. And when we get to that point where you feel that this is pretty good, we like what it is, we're going to, we'll ask you to recommend something to the council. Council members, the mayor's here tonight, I'm sure council members will be attending. It's a public meeting here, so they'll, whether, it's up to them whether they want to add anything, but generally, it's going to be your workshops that give rise to a draft, a final draft plan. And we'll have nice graphics. The fun of a comp plan versus a financial plan is, you, you want to see visually what you look like and what you think you want to look like. And we can, there's lots of magazines and videos online and elsewhere that will show you those towns you've visited, or maybe once lived in, that look like what you think we ought to look like, or whatever. And then you're going to be asked to do an exercise, you could start doing it now if you want, which is to go to any of the four corners of town, or the four winds on the compass, and look back and try to find the downtown where you know you're standing on DeKalb turf. And tell me if, tell yourselves and the rest of us, you feel that that's where DeKalb ought to end, or should you go a little further, or have you gone too far. That's a good way to start, and then you start thinking visually and spatially about the planning universe that is your world.
Could I ask a quick question? I read the last comp plan, and it seemed like a nice, measured, slow growth. And I know typically residential growth follows industrial growth, and we were experiencing fairly rapid industrial growth.
fairly rapid industrial growth. So, I'm assuming that as you are working on the comp plan, it'll be reflective, the plan, looking at planning for residential growth, somewhat reflective?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question, and I think that's to be answered, and I'll tell you why. If you look at our comp plan from 2005, you see anything that wasn't already growing, out to the mile and a half planning, state planning jurisdiction, as yellow, basically, which means, we don't know what it's going to be, but it's probably going to be residential if it's out that far. It's not close to industrial, it's not close to commercial, that's where we ought to be expanding. And it hasn't happened. And, that may not be what you want. You may want to continue to see a cornfield at that intersection on Antigliddan and Bethany, or, you know, just to give you an example. And if that's the case, we, is, there's no law against coloring some of that green. On the other hand, you may see some things that haven't developed, let's say along Peace, well, Peace Road I won't say, but some other places in town, that would give rise to residential that you hadn't thought about, so. And they can be small pockets or big pockets. So, I think that's your call, it's going to be partly your call, and ultimately, the council's call. And that's the fun part. And, we'll be pulling at this silly putty that's our, our geography, a lot, I think. And then we'll also add up statistically, the population that that will generate. That's key, too. Some places have said, well, we're at, well, now we know we're at 40,290, that's what the census said we are. I've been places where didn't want to go any higher than X. Geneva is landlocked, they're at 25,000 maybe, but they've, they've got a lot of commercial and a little bit of industrial, so mostly commercial. So, you can start parsing it down at that level, too. You say, well, I think we ought to be, in five years, 45,000, and we ought to have this much more land aggregated for residential. So, these, these are the discussions we're going to have. To help you with that, we're going to have graphs, and we're going to have tables that'll show you, for instance, like, Irongate has never had one lot sold in, right? But, it was platted in a preliminary sense for X hundreds of units. So, you'll have a, a table that will show, Irongate's a 500 and zero, and then the Knowles, 450 and 235, so you know what the capacity is that exists, before we start thinking, well, gee, we ought to go get some more. That will help you, I hope.
Yeah, I mean, to that point, I think that that's a very valid suggestion, is that maybe where we had such expansive limitations out to the, you know, a mile out, or whatever the case may be, that by controlling that to a certain degree, we can condense the population, and maybe sell some of the lots, and, that haven't been sold in the existing places that we have, so.
One last thing, you will also be given like an adjunct piece, which will be called Urban Design Guidelines. So, you can weigh in, if you think there are some general statements you want to make about how you see buildings reflecting what we think our town looks like. If we, if we're going to have larger buildings, how do you put them into a human scale? And then the other, the other piece is, we could do some, we have zoning districts, right? Dan talks about it all the time, that's what you deal with. Most communities have one or two overlay districts. Now, we have two. One is the floodplain, that's kind of a given, you know, there's some things you just can't do on that, whether it's running through residential, or commercial, or industrial. We have, we could have others that depict a special attention to X. Just keep that in mind. Oftentimes, there's an historic district, say. So, that, that means you can still have residential, commercial, industrial in there, mostly like, like commercial and residential, but here are the things that we think we shouldn't see, and here are the things we really want to see retained, restored, or preserved. So, that's another example. And, we don't have to do that as part of the comp plan, but if you call out something like that, or you recommend it, then we know what our, our plan of work is for the next couple of years.
Would that be an appropriate place for, like, for instance, architectural standards or suggestions, too?
Yeah, the urban design standards often have that. And, there's a, there's a whole range of what you can do with that. It could just be, here it is, we'd sure like you to look at this before you get going, to the other end, which is almost, it's very directive, I won't say punitive, but very directive, so, depends on what you think the need is.
Sure. Thank you. Comments, questions? Anyone? Okay, if that is it, I will ask for a move to adjourn.
Move that we adjourn this meeting?
Moved by McMahon.
Second.
Second, am I right? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Nope.
One of these days, I'm going to say aye.
I'm just waiting.
You're waiting. I'm going to wait till we're bogged down in the middle of the...
And I will burst out laughing.